I'd like to call and order this joint meeting, the North Bend City Council Work Session and Council Meeting, November 12th, 2024, at six o'clock. Will you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its republic, with all its benefits, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you assist in a roll call?
Counselor Jones.
Here.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Counselor President Garmon.
Here.
Counselor Gold.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Present.
Counselor Nordoff.
Present.
Thank you.
Next order of business is a ceremonial swearing in of engineer firefighter Tyler Easter by Chief Brown.
Tonight, we're going to swear in Tyler Easter as engineer firefighter for North Bend. He's been around a little bit. He's been at Coos Bay Fire, and he was a resident volunteer there, volunteering his attending SWAC to get his fire science degree and the paramedic, or ENT. And then he went to Charleston to work full-time at Charleston, and since then, he's been able to bring him over to North Bend. It's been a great adventure so far. A lot of times, we go through our orientation period, and it's a time for someone to learn and do a lot of learning. It's been an opportunity for Tyler to prove what he already knows, and he has a really good base to build off of. We're very excited for the next years coming up. He's going to be a real strong asset to our department. We're very excited for that. So let's get to swearing in. I, Tyler Easter.
I, Tyler Easter.
As an engineer firefighter with the city of North Bend.
As an engineer firefighter with the city of North Bend.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the... I can't ask that one. And the state of Oregon.
And the Constitution of Oregon. And the Constitution of the state of Oregon.
I will faithfully, honestly, and ethically.
I will faithfully, honestly, and ethically.
Discharge the duties and the mission of the city of North Bend.
Discharge the duties and the mission of the city of North Bend.
And of the North Bend Fire Department.
And of the North Bend Fire Department.
I hereby commit to conduct myself in a manner.
I hereby commit to conduct myself in a manner.
That will always uphold the public's faith and trust in me.
That will always uphold the public's faith and trust in me.
And in the department, so help me God.
And in the department, so help me God.
Thank you. So he has to have his girlfriend, Siana, to cleanse of his bad disease.
Why not? Jesse could be mad if we didn't.
No, that would have been a treat.
We'll do the in-person and then...
Excellent. All right. Okay. There you go. Do you want your girlfriend to end it with two? I asked.
Siana?
All right. There you go.
Let's get mom and dad.
Thank you. Do you want your girlfriend to end it with two? I asked.
Siana?
All right. There you go.
Thank you. One more thing. I'm sorry. I messed up. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
I'd just like to say that I'm extremely grateful to be here. I'd like to say thank you to all my friends and my family, as well as my new family for being out here and supporting me today.
Number four. Mr. Miller, will you walk us through the consent calendar?
Oh, yes. On the consent calendar, you have acknowledgment of the bills from October 2024 on page one. You have a Office 365 team's annual renewal, Microsoft Outlook, and team's license on page 11. Authorization to pay eco-analysis for chronic affluent wet testing on page 14. Replacement of sander and snow plow on page 16. And the amendment to the Convent Citizen Advisory Board on page 27. The council would like any particulars on those. Staff is available to answer questions.
Anybody have questions on the consent calendar?
No. I want to say I want to express gratitude to Mr. Bonetti for stepping forward for the extraordinary management.
Anybody else? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept the consent calendar as written.
One second.
I have a first from Counselor Jones, second from Counselor Hamilton. Any discussion? All those are favored?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry on. Number five, public comment. Thank you for participating in public comment this evening. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and city recorder are taking notes of action if needed. Do we have any more than these two here?
We have.
Okay.
I didn't see where you signed up. I apologize, but I would like to do public comment, unless we're going to do comment on individual items.
Nope.
Then I will like to do public comment.
Okay, we'll do that. Let's do online first.
Maybe you want to name that person.
Mr. Compton, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead. Three minutes.
Okay. I don't think I'll need three minutes. I just wanted to address the council on behalf of myself and my partner, Mr. Miller. And these comments relating to the three side-by-side-by-side lots on North Broadway. And I just wanted the council to realize that we've been very active since the first part of September in cleanup. We have over $3,500 in dump fees and related costs and over 600 man-hours in cleanup. We've also included in those man-hours have been doing the, I'd call it, yard work. We've had two very long days of burning yard debris that we've cleared from the property. It's looking so much better now. And also applied for a permit for the foundation on the one house. And I'm a little bit behind in communication with Ralph on the second house, and I have to apologize for that. But I'll be back tomorrow morning, and I'll meet with Ralph tomorrow discussing that other house. And again, like I mentioned before, we're being proactive. Maybe we're a little slow in getting started, but we've got a lot of momentum now, and hope that we can continue working with the city. And that's it.
All right. Thank you much.
You're welcome.
Chris Castleman. Name and address, please, and then you've got three minutes.
My name is Chris Castleman. I do not live in North Bend. I live just outside city limits. I'm here to talk about the DEI pledge that you guys have on the agenda tonight. I understand there's been prior discussion, and I also understand the resolutions from 2020, so it wasn't something that you guys put out there. But from what I can see, you're asking people who do business with the city to agree to this pledge. It says affidavit of compliance with Resolution 3287. I looked at the resolution. I have a lot of concerns about it, but I only have two and a half minutes left, so I'll be brief. I mean, the biggest problem is the word equity with me. Equity is, it's written six times in the resolution. It's written three times in the affidavit of compliance. And why not use the word equality? It's concerning to me because I understand the difference between those two words, equality and equity. If you don't, please research it. There is a difference. From my understanding, it's probably best to do an illustration. A short guy and a tall guy standing at a fence, that's equal because they're both equal in terms of their opportunity to see over the fence, if you look at it from their perspective. But unfortunately, the tall guy is the only one who can see over the fence. Equity, then, gives the short guy a stool. Now they can both see over the fence, and that is equitable. That's my understanding of it. If that's not your understanding, then we disagree. But I guess maybe it should be better defined in the resolution or the affidavit of compliance because we don't want to just hand out stools. That's not equality. I was raised in a world where we envisioned equality, not equity. So the other thing is, is anyone here a Republican? Like, raise your hand. Is the city council Republican? We got one. All right. In the Republican Party platform, it says, the Oregon Republican Party platform, it says, "We strongly support the First Amendment and condemn cancel culture or retaliation against any manner of speech." So I don't know if this is true. I'd like to hear a discussion on it. But for instance, if a business had a contract with you guys, and they were out there and they had any manner of speech that you just didn't, that you disagreed with, or it wasn't in following with equity values, it's my assumption that you could cancel that contract just based on their speech. If that's not true, it would probably be better to articulate that in the affidavit of compliance. Also, like, if I was a business owner, I wouldn't sign it. I really don't care what it says. Like, I'm not gonna... The one thing on it, it said, "Full compliance with the values and policies of Resolution 3287." I mean, it's one thing to have somebody comply with policy, but to full compliance with the values, the values of this DEI equity stuff? Come on now. Like, you shouldn't have people agreeing to comply with that. It's crazy. So I got five seconds. Thank you for your time, or for my time, and your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor. Name and address, please, and you have three minutes.
Hello, Counselor Rob Taylor. I'm from Banden, Oregon, and I do have some concerns with North Bend. And if you don't think I do have some investment in North Bend, I do live in six of the counties that donate or contribute, pay for the debt of your urban renewal agency. So actually, I do contribute to the city. And so I think that I should have a say, and my problem is the same thing that Chris just talked about, is the diversity, equity, and inclusion. First off, those words aren't defined, and I think you should define them before you do it. And I also think that the actual process or practice of diversity, equity, and inclusion, that's part of critical race theory. Critical race theory is one of the cornerstones of a Marxist cultural revolution. And so you put in DEI. What does DEI do? It separates us into different genders, sexual orientations, and races. I'm one of those who believes we're all one race, we're the human race, right? And so I don't think we should be divided into those groups. Why would they divide us into those groups? And I'll tell you exactly why. Because they want to separate us so that they can divide us. That's the only way they can take out the government that exists right now. And so they're dividing us into classes. And when you divide us into those classes, they make one of those classes the oppressor and the other is oppressed. And so if you're actually worried about diversity in this community, which I don't think there's any problem, I think we have a great community. And I think if you ask most of the minorities here, or anyone in the LGBT community, they would tell you they probably have never experienced any problems living in this county. I know we had a wonderful black man who was not only the sheriff, he was the chair of the Republican Party, and he was one of the most popular commissioners to ever preside on the commission, and that was Andy Jackson. He was a good friend, and I wish he would be here today so he could address some of this stuff as a black man in this community. So I'm asking you today that you need to go back to that resolution. You can rescind that resolution, change the wording in it, get rid of the diversity, equity, and inclusion, do the same thing with this affidavit. I wouldn't even have an affidavit. I called this county, and I talked to Bobby, you all know Bobby, and I talked to her, and I talked to Forrest over in Kokil, and I asked him, "Do they have affidavits that they force anyone to sign before they do this?" And they said, "No." And I said, "So it's not a requirement of the state?" And they said, "Not, and for our knowledge." So if they don't have it, I don't think North Bend needs it because it's just going to divide you. And if you are truly worried about diversity, I want you to look at the makeup of this board. You're all white, most of you are probably Christians, many are probably, most of you are heterosexual. So if you're really worried about diversity, then you all should resign and put a minority in your place from the LGBTQ or some other group that you're worried about them being oppressed. But that's not what the problem is. What the problem is, is that you want to cater to the state's DEI program, and I understand that. It's also in the federal government, and it's eating its way into every aspect of the government, and you've got to fight that because you owe it to your constituents. And thank you very much kindly for your time.
Okay. Onto, let's see what that is. I'm in number six. Proposed amendment for additional architectural services for the North Bend Public Library Project.
We have a presentation from our library director.
Oh, she's done traveling?
She is done traveling and back. A little jet lagged, but she's back.
Good evening. Since the city initially contracted with Robertson Sherwood Architects to provide services for the planning and management of our library renovation project, the timeline for that project changed, and there have been some additional work requirements that were not anticipated in the original scope. Robertson Sherwood Architects is now requesting an amendment to our agreement to cover the costs associated with these extended services and additional work outside of that initial fee that had been proposed and accepted. The staff recommendation is that the council authorize the city administrator to approve this amendment in the amount of $60,985. And in your packet, we included some of the documentation that had been provided by Robertson Sherwood documenting that additional workload and tasks that have been performed by their firm.
Anybody have questions?
Was it mainly the roof? The roof, the issue?
Yes, that was a large portion of the cost. Consulting services from ABV, which is a waterproofing and structural engineering company, as well as some structural engineering services required to repair the dry rot that was found in the parapet of the building. It did extend into the actual structure, and so that required some additional services.
No additional questions. I will entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the city administrator to approve the additional services amendment proposed by Robertson Sherwood Architects PC for the North Bend Public Library Renovation Project in the amount of $60,985.
Second.
I have a first from Counselor Jones, a second from Counselor Nordoff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for the additional detail in our packet. That is great.
Okay. Number seven, FEMA Biop presentation.
This is found on page 41 of your packet. We have our city planner, Derek, who will be making a presentation before the council.
Can I have you control it? Do you want me to control it? Okay. Good evening, Honorable Council President and City Council. This evening, we're going to be discussing the Federal Emergency Management Agency's biological opinion in order to comply with the Endangered Species Act, further known as FEMA and ESA. I'll get into the timeline that FEMA has published a little bit later on in this presentation. But for now, just know that A, any action on this matter is completely will of the council, and B, we must pick an option, or an option will be picked for us. Could you give me... It's not control on for me? Ah, there we go. Okay. So before we start and get into the meat and potatoes of this, I want to kind of walk through this diagram showing the different parts of the National Flood Insurance Program regulatory framework. So looking from the inside out of this diagram, we, there's the floodway or regulatory floodway, as it's known in the federal insurance rate program, I believe is what it's called. And that is the boundary of a river or water course that must be maintained in order to discharge the base flood elevation. So basically, just a plus or minus to account for some seasonal flooding. And then there's the 100-year floodplain, which gets a little wider, or a lot wider in some cases. And this is also known as the special flood hazard area. This area is an area that has a 1% chance or higher of flooding in a given year. This is where the rest of the regulations and rules that we'll talk about tonight come into play, as this is the trigger for any future regulations that are being passed on from FEMA. Finally, there's the riparian buffer zone, or RBZ, as we'll refer to it from here on, which extends 170 feet from the mean high watermark, which is effectively the average of the highest high watermarks over a given period of time. It's defined in federal statute. It's important to note that under FEMA floodplain rules, the RBZ riparian buffer zone only comes into play when there's a triggering floodplain development. So National Flood Insurance Program. So what's the NFIP? This is a program that is federally backed insurance rates based on the community management program. In this case, FEMA makes the rules. We, the community, implement and enforce the rules, and then homeowners, businesses and homeowners and businesses with mortgages and loans that require flood insurance have federally backed coverage that ensures coverage in the event of a flood event or disaster. We, North Bend, are the community in this case, and being a participating community, there's a certain level of rolling with the punches that we have to do as rules change at the federal level. The trade-off is that properties can be developed in the floodplain with certain standards and provisions being met. So I mentioned that we had to kind of roll with the punches. This is one of those times. FEMA was involved in a lawsuit that effectively stated that they were not fully in compliance with the Endangered Species Act, or ESA, and as a result, were ordered to get a biological opinion and environmental impact statement. While working on this, FEMA was sued again for not implementing interim measures, and as a result, has issued pre-implementation compliance measures, or PICMS, as we're going to refer to them tonight, which are, and we're going to discuss those here in just a moment. The PICMS draft guidance was released at the end of July of 2024, and I wasn't able to get into any FEMA-led clarifying webinars to get guidance on any of these documents until the end of October 2024. At that webinar, I learned that the documentation that was provided in July was not final, and we wouldn't get final PICMS guidance until about mid-November. You'll notice it's not mid-November yet. So FEMA has provided that we must select and begin implementing one of their PICMS measures by December 1st, 2024, and if we don't, we will default to PICMS number two. The red dot on this slide is where we are, and you'll notice that in 2025, January 30th, we have to start collecting data on floodplain developments, and July of 2020, or June, January, sorry, of 2026, we will begin submitting that data back to FEMA. So these are the PICMS options. One is a model ordinance. Two is a permit by permit or case-by-case review. Three is a total moratorium on floodplain development. So the model ordinance. This sounds good on paper, is a ready-to-go option, but the standards in this model are no net loss, meaning that for every cubic yard of development, you must find a developed cubic yard to mitigate with or remove. There's some additional mitigation ratios that make this a rather extreme option. The RBZ provisions are triggered if any floodplain development is required under this ordinance. So if you do work in the floodplain, you're within the RBZ, it triggers compliance with the RBZ, and you have to mitigate in that area as well. So there is mitigation required for any development that affects a floodplain function in that case of pervious surface development, water quality, or trees over six inches at diameter at best height. And finally, it has some takings implications. So that means that the local government is restricting a previously allowed use by ordinance or ruling. And going back to NFIP slide, this is because we are the rules enforcement portion of the NFIP program. So it wouldn't be FEMA creating a takings issue since we hypothetically adopted the ordinance, right? And this slide shows some of those mitigation ratios for different actions. And so within the floodplain, for example, if we were in the RBZ fringe and we cut down a 39-inch tree, we got to plant five six-inch trees now for every one 39-inch tree that you cut down. And that's just the most extreme example, but it is a pretty high ratio of mitigation, as I understand it, relative to any other regulations that are on the books. So do you have any questions about PICMS number one?
It sounds like that's the easiest to implement and not what we want. It's too much oversight, too much demand.
Staff shares a similar viewpoint.
Okay, good. Good.
Yes.
Do we really have any much property that's within any type of a floodway now? We're kind of maxed out on...
We have over 200 individual parcels that touch the floodplain.
Really?
In North Bend, and there's just over 400 that are affected by the riparian buffer zone. So it does, it's not an insignificant amount by any means.
Okay. And is riparian about water or about habitat?
Habitat. That's what that's about primarily, is for compliance with the 16 species listed in the Endangered Species Act for our area, that this lawsuit was very focused, I should say. Okay. So permit by permit. So this option allows for some concessions on a case-by-case basis with a caveat that the applicant receives a compliant habitat assessment for their project and vicinity of their project. Final versions of this guidance, again, won't be out till mid-November, so unfortunately, I can only go off of what has been communicated at the webinars that I've attended. So the no net loss is still a factor in this methodology, as is the mitigation standards. However, it includes a delineation, which, if a mapped floodplain was off, could mean a difference between development or not. So if the map was wrong and... This is one of those times. FEMA was involved in a lawsuit that effectively stated that they were not fully in compliance with the Endangered Species Act, or ESA, and as a result, were ordered to get a biological opinion and environmental impact statement. While working on this, FEMA sued again for not implementing interim measures, and as a result, has issued pre-implementation compliance measures, or PICMS, as we're going to refer to them tonight, which are, and we're going to discuss those here in just a moment. The PICMS draft guidance was released at the end of July of 2024, and I wasn't able to get into any FEMA-led clarifying webinars to get guidance on any of these documents until the end of October 2024. At that webinar, I learned that the documentation that was provided in July was not final, and we wouldn't get final PICM guidance until about mid-November. You'll notice it's not mid-November yet. So, FEMA has provided that we must select and begin implementing one of their PICM measures by December 1st, 2024, and if we don't, we will default to PICM number two. The red dot on this slide is where we are, and you'll notice that in 2025, January 30th, we have to start collecting data on floodplain developments, and July of 2020, or June, January, sorry, of 2026, we will begin submitting that data back to FEMA. So, these are the PICM options. One is a model ordinance. Two is a permit by permit or case-by-case review. Three is a total moratorium on floodplain development. So, the model ordinance. This sounds good on paper as a ready-to-go option, but the standards in this model are no net loss, meaning that for every cubic yard of development, you must find a developed cubic yard to mitigate with or remove. There's some additional mitigation ratios that make this a rather extreme option. The RBZ provisions are triggered if any floodplain development is required under this ordinance. So, if you do work in the floodplain, and you're within the RBZ, it triggers compliance with the RBZ, and you have to mitigate in that area as well. So, there is mitigation required for any development that affects a floodplain function in that case of impervious surface development, water quality, or trees over six inches at diameter at best height. And finally, it has some takings implications. So, that means that the local government is restricting a previously allowed use by ordinance or ruling. And going back to NFIP slide, this is because we are the rules enforcement portion of the NFIP program. So, it wouldn't be FEMA creating a takings issue since we hypothetically adopted the ordinance, right? And this slide shows some of those mitigation ratios for different actions. And so, within the floodplain, for example, if we were in the RBZ fringe and we cut down a 39-inch tree, we got to plant five six-inch trees now for every one 39-inch tree that you cut down. And that's just the most extreme example, but it is a pretty high ratio of mitigation, as I understand it, relative to any other regulations that are on the books. So, do you have any questions about PICM number one?
It sounds like that's the easiest to implement, and not what we want. It's too much oversight, too much demand.
Staff shares a similar viewpoint.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Do we really have any much property that's within any type of a floodway now? We're kind of maxed out on.
We have over 200 individual parcels that touch the floodplain.
Really?
In North Bend, and there's just over 400 that are affected by the riparian buffer zone. So, it does, it's not an insignificant amount by any means.
Okay. And is riparian about water or about habitat?
Habitat. That's what that's about primarily, is for compliance with the 16 species listed in the Endangered Species Act for our area, that this lawsuit was very focused, I should say. Okay. So, permit by permit. So, this option allows for some concessions on a case-by-case basis with a caveat that the applicant receives a compliant habitat assessment for their project and vicinity of their project. Final versions of this guidance, again, won't be out till mid-November, so unfortunately, I can only go off of what has been communicated at the webinars that I've attended. So, the no net loss is still a factor in this methodology, as is the mitigation standards. However, it includes a delineation, which if a mapped floodplain was off, could mean a difference between development or not. So, if the map was wrong, and your biologist, engineer, civil engineer, whoever qualified professional goes out and determines that, well, the elevation here is actually 10 feet higher than it shows on the map, well, we can do a map amendment, and you can then develop, and you're not in the floodplain. So, there's reduced takings liability, as this is a standard, a performance standard, rather than a blanket ban on development, for all intents and purposes. There may still be takings issues here, which we'll need to explore in greater detail with the city attorney as final guidance is released. This option reduces staff time and staff administration costs, as hypothetically, there should be a complete report on hand to reference for our reporting requirements. And again, in theory, should be a simple checklist or worksheet that is supposed to be able to be completed by any qualified professional. And with that, do you have any questions on PICM number two?
I like PICM number two.
Does the permit go back to FEMA for approval?
So, local development permits will not. That'll be my review authority. If there's a map amendment, or a, well, pretty much just a map amendment or revision, then that'll go to FEMA for review. But other than that, I will be the review authority. They do audit on occasion, and that's for community certification. And so, they will go in and pull all of our floodplain permits for a certain range of period, or period of time, and ensure that we are tracking and complying with the rules that have been set out. And if we're not, we have X amount of time to get all those properties into compliance, or we could lose our national flood insurance, or we could lose our FEMA coverage, just generally for emergencies, so.
So, if we don't make a decision, and we didn't reverse back to number two, does that mean that they are really into number two for FEMA, or is it just, I doubt they would award us number two? If we don't pick one, it reverts to number two. It does.
So, if we don't pick one by December 1st, then FEMA will default us to number two until we make an official action, or do an official action to make a choice. Staff supports the idea of PICM number two, as far as supporting any of these goes. And I think that that's going to be the path forward that is the least resistance, as there, yeah.
Are we assuming mid-November is the 15th, like three days from now?
I sure am hoping so.
Okay.
I didn't get any better clarification than mid-November, so.
I feel like if we're in, if we agree, I feel like just picking number two, as opposed to being assigned, just feels a little better to me, if we all agree that two is.
No, we haven't heard, I haven't heard.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Wait until you see that.
No, you can't do that one.
Okay.
Can't do this one.
So, moratorium. This is the most extreme options of the ones provided by FEMA. A total moratorium implicates measure 56 and has major takings issues, opening up the city to potential legal liability. Staff does not support this option. No. Some jurisdictions are doing this, and it's on temporary basis. Moratoriums in Oregon by land use law cannot be permanent in nature. They are temporary, per se, but they can't be renewed. So, some jurisdictions are exploring this option. We don't think that it's the right one for North Bend. Do you have any questions on?
If we pick option two.
Yes.
Somewhere down the road, if we take option one, would be a better opportunity? Do we have the ability to transfer?
Until 2027.
Okay. Then we have to just go with number two.
Okay.
Same time, and all you need is a consensus, or what? Double team votes now. Option four, what is it, Ralph?
Well, I have a slide for that.
You're talking about selecting an option. You default to PICM two, which we would have to administer. We think this whole thing's going to change in, overall, there's going to be lawsuits. This whole thing's going to change over the next two years, and the only thing I would do is caution you in selecting an option, specifically when you're defaulting to it anyway, because they haven't even got an ESA out yet. They haven't got any guidance documents out yet. So, in selecting an option, you actually saying we're going to pick an option, and Derek may say something different, is that you're kind of pinning yourself to one thing when all this is going to change anyway, I believe.
Well, I can touch on that, Ralph. I mean, I was, I'm one of the persons that's lived a project that fills five acres of the bay, and National Marine Fisheries, the BOs. In the course of our project, two other endangered species went on National Marine Fisheries thing, so everything about this is going to change. I lived it. I, yeah.
So.
The caution was only on selecting an option.
Yeah, so, my recommendation to council would be to select an option, but to limit the scope in which we select it. I would not recommend that we rewrite our floodplain development code. I would recommend that we write a one-sentence outer in there and say, "You must comply with the habitat assessment," if we pick PICM number two. And what that does is twofold. One, it means that we have regulatory authority to implement this option, and two means that when this inevitably changes, it's one sentence, and we can change it. It doesn't gut our whole code. That would be my recommendation to you if you were to select PICM number two.
But I would like not, I don't want to pick anything currently, because I think that is not even, like, we don't even have what it's doing currently, because it's not even out yet. I, I hear that. I totally hear that. I also feel like picking the local control one is kind of important, because what if crazy stuff happens, and the default becomes moratorium? The default becomes, you know what I mean? We don't know. So, to me, I don't know. That's what I'm saying. I'm just saying the local control is very appealing, and I'd rather have a stake in the ground in a changing land that is about our local control.
Well, if we pick number two, we don't want to plan whatever.
Yeah. And I like the recommendation. Potentially, because it's going to, we're going to find out more mid-November.
Yes.
Potentially, we know what we're talking about.
At least you know when you can local control.
Potentially.
So, these PICM options are not going to change. The content in the guidance will change. So, these are our options for the time being.
Well, that makes me feel bad.
Now, their final EIS, environmental impact statement, and Biop are going to be done in 2027, so with our luck, we'll get guidance in August again, and then have to adopt by December of 2027. That's a bridge that we can get to later. But it will change in the near future, so my advice or recommendation would be to not completely gut anything one way or the other.
So, should we pick one? I mean.
I'd say pick number two.
Are you done with your presentation?
Not quite, but I'm just about there.
Okay.
Okay. Secret option. Option number four, do nothing, change nothing, track nothing. This is the most extreme option of potential options. However, it does have impacts, potential impact, to mortgages, leases, loans, and, I already said mortgages, of private entities within the floodplain, and would potentially impact over 200 parcels within the city of North Bend, and open us up to the opportunity to lose disaster funding. I don't think that's a good option, but I want to present it to you, so you are well-informed. So, case study. So, if you were to build a 2,000-square-foot home next to Pony Creek in the floodplain, you would have to fill above the floodplain, because you're not allowed to develop residential in the actual floodplain. You couldn't fill above it, though. So, you had two foot of fill to build one foot of fill above the floodplain. Total impervious surface is 2,400 square feet with a 400-foot, square-foot driveway. So, the mitigation required is 4,000 cubic feet of fill, of removal of development in the floodplain, and mitigation's required for that 2,400 square feet of impervious surface as well, because you're affecting the runoff now. And you must plant three, five, or six trees based on size for every tree removed. So, that's one example.
Based on size of property or based on size of trees?
Based on size of the tree, the tree removed, yeah. So, for every tree that you remove, you have to plant X amount back in this example. This example, heating unit replacement, it's a non-substantial improvement, so it doesn't qualify as substantial improvement for development definitions anywhere in the special flood hazard area. So, it's exempt from the no net loss standards, but it does still need a floodplain development permit for tracking purposes. So, I still have to report this to FEMA every year that this was done, you know, that this equipment is located in the special flood hazard area, but they don't need to go through the whole habitat assessment if you pick PICM number two. So, do you have any questions on anything else? That concludes my presentation. All right. Thank you.
Do you need a consensus or consensus or?
It'd be better if you sort of take a vote of the council, and then that gives the staff direction, and then we will move forward with legislation as a text amendment back to code and bring it back to council.
I guess I'll entertain a motion.
I move to choose PICM number two, permit by permit, as our desired option to comply with the FEMA stuff.
You're going to add a line to that?
To our floodplain development code, yes.
Second.
Got a first from Councilor Jones, second from Councilor Nordoff. Any discussion?
I think that Derek is going to have a really good handle on this and be able to steer course through it when the time comes.
Thank you.
Yeah, agreed.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Option two is our choice of.
Thank you.
Now, here's the elephant in the room, the affidavit of compliance with resolution number 3287.
So, at your last meeting, you asked that this particular topic come back for discussion and potential action by the council. Our city attorney and myself, working with staff, and also, I want to appreciate Counselor Jones, she provided some feedback, and I understand she may have talked to two other counselors. And so, she, as of today, submitted some additional information that's not in your packet in talking to the city attorney. It may behoove if council has even additional tweaks, given the fact that the mayor's not here, and you're going to have two new counselors at the next meeting, that there's a recommendation to move this to an actual work session where you can sort of hammer out the verbiage. But with that said, your city attorney is on line with the current modified version and can walk you through that, and that starts on page 69 of your packet.
You're up, Mark.
Yeah, so, good evening, council, and I guess I'm more here to field any questions that you all might have. You know, as the, as your city administrator pointed out in the cover sheet, the affidavit was modified to remove employees having to be in compliance with this. It removed references to bigotry and hate speech, which are not defined legal terms, and aims to ensure that companies are complying with federal, state, and local anti-discrimination laws. So, in essence, asserting that they are going to comply with the law. And so, I guess we feel like these revisions maintain the intent of the original affidavit, but makes it more so that companies are agreeing that they will comply with the law and comply with anti-discrimination laws, and agree not to engage in unlawful discrimination or abuse. And those are defined terms.
Is this required by Oregon or federal law that all suppliers of the municipality have to sign a, an affidavit like this?
Not that I'm aware of. There are certainly federal and state requirements when the city gets grant funding, that the state or the federal government will require the contract to have a pretty clear anti-discrimination language, and so, at times, there are requirements that a city contract will require this type of, this type of stuff.
Well, that could have just been wrote into the contract, right? Instead of having this affidavit through everybody?
It is written.
Well, I agree, but I'm just making a point here. Yeah. Yeah.
And do any other municipalities in our local area require this?
I'm not aware. We haven't reached out and asked that particular question.
I know I've asked before.
No, I called them. No.
Before we, you know, I think we're going to probably push this to another meeting for greater discussion, but I would like to have a, some sort of report on how many other local entities are doing something like this affidavit.
Certainly.
I totally agree with that, and I won't be here to hear it, but I'll bet it'd be a good thing.
You can always come back.
You gonna zoom in? You gonna zoom in?
I don't know. I'm writing reading snow trail.
Okay, but does anybody have any heartache about us postponing this until our December thing, so we can have it on a work session and actually talk about it?
Yeah, I agree. I understand, I understand sort of the need for this. I also think that this is way too hard for an average person to understand, and there's a lot of stuff in here, and I think a simple statement of, "I agree to comply with the law," like, that's what's required, you know, if it even is required. So, I would be totally in favor of really simplifying this if it's required, and I think we should talk about it.
Well, you know, I know I was on council when the resolution was passed, and none of us ever envisioned that it would go from what the city wants for the city, and then expanding out to everybody the city does business with. Are you going to have the oil companies and the internet and the telephone and everybody else sign these things?
Right now, we as staff haven't had any pushback. Anyone that's receiving taxpayer money, and what is, obviously, you know from your last meeting what triggered this. We've had subsequent open records requests, same thing. We've also had one other instance with another company that we do business with. There is, as you say, in our state and federal contracts, there's already verbiage, which is required. The difference is that as we have picked up in excess of $20 million worth of grants, there are additional verbiage in the grant funders to make sure that we're in compliance and adherence. And so, we're not in the investigatory business. In fact, that's how we had replied back to initial response. We're simply just saying, if we get an audit, we have the piece of paper in there, and they said that they were in compliance. And it gets us, more importantly, past the most recent one, which will be the next T-HUD audit, which is $4 million.
Yeah, so, this is why I think some kind of, something like this is required. I mean, we're not, we're not in a position where we're able to self-fund some of the things that we really need to do, like the housing stuff. And I'm not talking about subsidized housing. I'm talking about the annex projects that's going to be built for people who are actually working, contributing. And so, to me, something like this, I think Rod Taylor had it right in his report, where he's like, "This is a cover-your-ass." It is definitely a cover-your-ass. We want to be out of the investigation business. We want to stay out of court, you know? So, I feel like there's some power here that we need to, you know, we need to use, not power, but, you know, a clear, a clear thing that separates us from, you know, we've, this is how we confirm that people are applying, that people are complying with these laws, right? So, I understand the power in that, especially because we really need the grants that we have so far and need more into the future from these shared pools, you know, from the state. That said, I think this is too much language. I think it's too hard to understand. I mean, I'm not a lawyer. I just think a non-lawyer should be able to have something really simple, and it should be, "I'm complying with the law. I agree. I am complying with the law. I affirm, I'm complying with the law." And this is, this is a lot. This is too much for me. So, you know, I think there's a real need for this. I think we need to simplify this.
I think that the second draft, which, there's two drafts here, the old draft and the new draft, and the new draft is much improved. the old draft and the new draft, and the new draft is much improved, it doesn't require notary signature. So that's a lot smoother and I think less entangling of bad possibilities or misinterpretation and the whole nine yards is pretty clean.
It got really confusing when you guys were in Bend at the League of Oregon Cities and to say we didn't have any pushback is, is not accurate because I have two companies on me like, are you accusing us of being racist? You know, trust me, and, and rightfully so, because they, nobody, and I didn't have an answer. I didn't, I had to go get the original one from the company that it was given to. It, 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 it got out of hand without us knowing what was going on. I'll put it that way.
So I'm gonna respectfully disagree there. This was sent down almost three, if not four weeks ahead of the first complaint that came in from you personally. And so if you look back at the original communication that went out to the council, it was sent out to the council well ahead of the implementation.
It, it didn't show that out, did it?
Yes, sir, it did.
Okay, okay. Point taken. I wanna take a moment here to, to sort of underscore why we need something like this, although I want simplified, simplified language. And I'm just one, I'm just speaking for my thing. The mayor right now is in DC lobbying for our fair share of state and federal resources so that we can continue to build and rebuild North Bend because we're not a self-sustaining community at the level of, you know, our, our revenues that come to the city. So she's lobbying for us, for these state and federal resources that have these compliance things that are uncomfortable. So that is part of why we need something, I think. But I absolutely agree that we need to simplify this language and cut it down to the bare minimum of, you know, I, I agree, I'm going to comply with the state and federal regulation, you know, so that we have that.
Okay, but we're not the only ones receiving federal or state funds. I mean, there's all sorts of municipal entities around here. That's why I wanna find out who is passing out these affidavits or what are required.
And, and again, in the communication that went out, I believe it was October first to the council, we're only, the only municipality that was called out in a specific investigative article along with the court.
Yeah.
We've gotten subs, uh, follow-up email public records requests for those documents of interactions with the fire department. And so the official statement for the city is, we have no clue, nor is it any of our business. In fact, I included a follow-up packet of a statement from that company. And so you take them at the word. What we are at a, a sort of juncture point is, we get a phenomenal amount of private grant money from individual foundations or non-state federal grants that have very specific language in them. They come before this governing body and we have been using this specific resolution in order to show adherence and compliance with the stipulations. And so we have been sort of running under the radar, if you will. And so if that resolution or the sort of will of the council as to where it stands isn't the same, then we, we ought to send it to a work session and hammer it out because as I said, our next compliance audit is early next year. And that resolution is the holding resolution right now to four million dollars.
Like I said, we need to push this to December and so we can actually put some time into it.
Makes perfect sense.
Everybody agree?
Yeah.
Get some more information?
Sorry, new people.
Yeah. Okay. Number nine, update on declared nuisance structures must be wrong.
For the benefit of the council, it's on page seventy-eight, but also you had an earlier public comment and a gentleman spoke first. It's connect back to this update.
Yes.
Council president, members of the city council, I provided a report, which hopefully you have time to read. The primary reason for putting together the report, we have nine structures we've requested compliance within a hundred and eighty days. These were declared nuisances, they were obvious problems, and we've actually had one structure demolished voluntarily, two structures that they are looking at having us demolish and allowing us, they've got consent to lien forms. So we've had some progress, but the original dates on the first four structures, which were twenty-four nineteen, twenty-four fifty-one Broadway, which is what Mr. Compton was discussing earlier, thirty-eighty-five Sherman, and eighteen seventy-eight Need were the first four structures. The compliance date for those was September seventh, or October seventh, twenty-twenty-four. So all three of those are beyond their compliance. One of those structures has a, owned by Mrs. Rec et al. Mrs. Rec is passed away. There is one heir on the home still alive. We've tried to get in contact with her, we've talked to the state because she has awarded the state, they won't give us her name. That structure is going to be foreclosed on by Coos County on August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. And there is approximately sixty-three thousand dollars owed to the state and in taxes at this point, the property, if we demolished it, would probably be worth sixty to seventy thousand dollars. So it's a loser. But we still have a nuisance structure on it. So the major intent of this report is kinda update you on these structures and make some choices on how we wanna move forward on these structures. The compliance date on the last three is October twenty-fifth, or excuse me, November twenty-fifth. So it hasn't come up yet, but we won't have a council meeting before then. So we basically have three options in dealing with the structures. We went through the nuisance hearings, we can find the, we can find the owners for non-compliance, up to three hundred dollars a day. Or we can go through a proceed, we can get voluntary compliance with, in most cases, I'll kinda walk through them, most cases we are getting voluntary compliance. Or we can go through court proceedings with involuntary compliance, which includes A, getting an affidavit, filing for an affidavit, warrant, excuse me, a warrant to enter the property, then we have to prepare a report documenting all of the issues with the structure and proving that if we wanna demolish it, that it has more value demolished than it does standing. And then we have to go into circuit court and get an order to demolish it. So that is an absolute minimum of three months, a lot of staff time, probably closer to six to eight months to address the structure. So just keep that in the back of your mind. If we wanna push compliance, we can fine up to three hundred dollars a day for non-compliance. Not all those structures are beyond it, three structures are not beyond that date at this But the remaining six structures that we've already addressed are beyond that point at this date. And some of these, Mr. Compton's talked to you, he's progressing. I talked to almost everyone when we issued the original nuisance order, I said, I didn't want you to come in here fifteen days before the compliance date was done and apply for a permit. Of course, we all procrastinate and some of that happens. I'm gonna walk them real quick. Twenty-four nineteen, twenty-four fifty-one Broadway, that's Mr. Compton and Mr. Milan. They have done a ton of work starting in September on the property. He, when he mentioned, he still had to talk to me, he has decided to fix twenty-four fifty-one. He was debating on whether to demolish or fix twenty-four nineteen. He hasn't made that decision yet. He offered to do it by November second. Apparently he's gonna come in and talk to, I, we're getting compliance, he's moving along. I would recommend we just follow along on the timeframe. We haven't been getting complaints about the property because it's cleaned up. We haven't had the homeless on the property because it's been cleaned up. If we need to push him along, we can consider another date because he offered to have that one structure renovated by January fifteenth, which I think's a little tight for him regardless. But if I'm seeing substantial progress, staff doesn't have an issue, council may, but staff doesn't have an issue.
As long as they're making progress towards the goal that we all want.
Thirty-eighty-five Sherman is a house that burned at Clark and Sherman. He has signed a consent for access. I sent him last week. Mark and I worked on for a couple of weeks a consent lien form. He was sent that form last week. He's indicated he's gonna sign it, I haven't got it back. Again, he has been in discussion and working with us. He's also cleaned up the property, took, I think, three dumpster loads worth of debris out of the property. So he has been doing some work, it hasn't, doesn't look like it much from the outside, but there's, you get a burned structure, there's a lot of. Eighteen seventy-eight Need, again, we have one heir. This is a property that is owed a little over sixty thousand dollars to the state and to taxes, although it will not remove the structure. I think by the time we went through six to eight months of consent to enter, evaluation of the structure, the county's gonna take it for taxes and we can deal with the county at that point. That's staff's opinion, not that that's, was one of the first structures we wanted to get taken down, but it's definitely a loser for the city, you're not gonna recover any dollars, you're gonna actually lose money if you go to it. The structures are averaging, just so you're aware, by the time you, almost all these structures are older, so they have asbestos in them. So you're looking at eight hundred to a thousand dollars to have a asbestos investigation on the property. You're looking typically anywhere from five to twenty thousand to abate the structure, remove ceiling tiles, remove flooring, that type of thing. And then we get a demolition contract on it, which is anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars. So that, kinda keep in the back of your mind, you're looking at a, basically a twenty to forty thousand dollar bill when we tear one down. We have the money budget.
Yeah, but no, no way to get the money back.
In that particular case, there's no way to recover it. Twenty-five oh-two Everett, this one's a little bit of an anomaly, is there are heirs, we're gonna search probate, we have sent the letter out, we've got no response at all. There are heirs, I would not recommend until at least we have some contact from the heirs to know what they intend to do with the structure. It's part of its staff's research, has not gone into probate court and that type of thing. But it also is five years arrears in taxes.
I've been told they don't want, not do, not do.
We've been told they don't want anything to do with it, but nobody's come up and officially and said they don't want anything to do with it. We'll continue to pursue it, but I do wanna talk to some of the heirs somehow and get something more than rumors around town that.
I confirm you, Jim's number.
Okay. Thirteen eighty-five Bayview, they've actually demolished the structure, they're rebuilding, they demolished it to the basement level and they're rebuilding it, they promised to come in with, they have an architect working on the plans. So that one's progressing, done what we asked, cleared the brush around the structure and The last three, which aren't up yet, they have till November twenty-fifth. Thirteen oh-three Bayview, they've done some very minor repairs so far on the structure. He's came in three times, promised to get a building permit to completely secure the structure, which hasn't been secured so far to date, he hasn't followed up. I did send him a letter on, I believe November, it was either the end of October or November, first week of November, telling him his thirty days were up and I haven't heard from him yet. But we have been in contact with him, but we have not heard anything from Mr. Coleman. Seven eighty-three and a half Clark, that's again, all these structures were fire damaged. He has agreed for us to tear it down, we have a consent to lien form, we haven't submitted yet to him, but we're gonna provide that and he has agreed to sign the consent to lien. He wants to let the lien ride, I should step back with thirty-eighty-five Sherman, the intent of the owner is to pay the lien off in, in ten years. With seven eighty-three and a half Clark, his statement is, he's just gonna leave it on the property till the property sells. Twenty-one ten Broadway, they intend to demolish the structure, they've had Arcadia Environmental doing this hazmat survey, and they actually had on November twelfth, which is today, supposedly had the structure abated. It was scheduled for the twenty-fourth, but they were able to open their schedule up and get it done. They have a contractor scheduled to abate it. They've been very cooperative, very forward on this, apologizing for not being done, but I think this one will be demolished probably by the first of the year. I just was presenting these, if council wants us to take firmer action on the structures, it was a present to where we're at, and any guidance on how you want us to react or act further than what we're doing right now would be appreciated. Thank you, Bonnie.
Do you think that the, so my understanding is that there are just a handful of the total that aren't in the process of doing something, are in communication. We have one property, eighteen seventy-eight Need, which we would not be able to make the money we use back.
You'll not, yeah, it's my opinion, you'll never recover.
Yeah, we'll never recover that, but we'll recover that.
And Coos County will own it officially end of August.
Yeah.
At that point, our resolution, the clearance of a nuisance still stands, but we're dealing with somebody who actually can make a decision.
Yes. And then we have two, twenty-five oh-two Everett and thirteen oh-three Bayview where there's sort of.
Twenty-five oh-two again is a deceased, the owner is deceased, but we can contact the heirs. We haven't, again, as Counselor Gall stated, we've been told they want nothing to do with it through the grapevine.
Which isn't quite enough.
Which isn't quite a personal, no, we want nothing. And without making that contact, I do not wanna proceed on it until.
What's different now than when we, when we started sending letters originally, are we cutting them down? Like what's, what's the new, new plan?
In the end of August, early September, we actually got a guideline on how we had to deal with these, these properties in a full understanding of. We are, we had our abatement, we know what our ordinance says, but the actual steps to proceed on these properties, having to go through court twice.
Yeah.
Kinda, while we, at that point, which I guess was about mid-September, we were only about two weeks away from finishing or actually potentially sending letters out.
I'm going next.
I, I saw the, the writing on the wall, how long this was gonna take, which made us reevaluate it and look at how to address these maybe differently. We were kind of, well, safe, fat, dumb, and happy thinking, date comes and we can deal with these, but it isn't quite that simple.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Well, I have to say that I think that the process that was started, I think since Pat and I have been on council, has really started to pay off and I appreciate the staff's effort. Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't think we were doing much of anything when this whole question rose a couple of years ago, so this is, this is really a good process.
Okay, I'm gonna have to change things here. I, okay, you do it.
We're gonna change number fourteen.
I'm gonna try to get him in, get him out of an hour and I, I, I'm sorry, but we're ready.
We're gonna do number fourteen and do some.
Okay. You wanna just do the wash first?
Uh, we'll do both.
I gotta, I gotta go.
I gotta go.
I'd like to say that I've, I've had fun working with the city of North Bend.
Yes, sir.
I try to bring a little humor to this place and, and sometimes it works and I, I came into this thinking that we should have a moment of silence, we've done that, but we'll show. thinking that we should have a moment of silence and be done, but the show must go on. So, yeah, go ahead, I agree.
I've got a little plaque for Pat here. City North Bend's staff assistance. Sincerely thank you for your eight years of dedicated, you've been here now long. Your commitment to our community and leadership on the City Council left a lasting impact 2014 to 18, 2020 to 24. Grateful for your unwavering dedication and volunteer.
Well, thanks. I've been a North Benner. I, I hope that we've made decisions that, that has proved to be warranted and I think we have. And I've, our company doesn't exist by grant funding, so I'm going to take our customers to dinner, so.
Hold on, we're on a photo.
Yeah.
Getting the photo.
Well.
Where are you going?
I have the photo.
Jess is, Jess is.
Stand by Pat.
Stand by Pat.
Eight years, now you have one.
All right, ready? All right, look at me. All right. Thank you, sir. Get out of here.
Okay. Here you go. Give him a mail back.
No.
He just took off.
She says she's going to get something out of her car.
She's going to get something out of her car.
14 and a half. Maybe we're back to 11, I don't know.
Ralph, you don't need guidance at this time though, correct?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Unless you want to change the way we're working.
No, it sounds good.
Should we recess and just choose back?
Move on to something else. Who's, who's in the video?
Okay. We're moving on to action item number 10. If any result from these actions are sessions, we don't, didn't have any. City Administrator's Report.
All right, the full report's published online. Couple of highlights, the Halloween Extravaganza, the third annual North Bend Main Street Halloween Extravaganza. It was held October 26th and we welcomed over 800 attendees. And so that's always a great success. We also had specific sponsors, Simply Fiber, Coos Bay Toyota, Coos Health and Wellness and the City of North Bend. And so very, very appreciative of them. The facade has been completed at the building formerly known as Chicorelli's, which, that building's now celebrating its 100th year. In addition to the facade improvement, we've restored it to a close replica of its original design. The renovations include the roof repair, stucco application, the pillar reconstruction and fresh paint. The beautifully restored buildings at 2076 Sherman. It houses two businesses, the Tin Rooster and the North Forty Brewery, both open and operational. And work will soon begun on the, will begin on the adjacent building, which is the former Salon Bella, that plans to restore its original facade as well. The Fire Department, shout out to them. They have been very busy working with contractor and partners, including the school district on defensible space projects. Also want to give a shout out to the water board that actually financially participated in one of these defensible space projects. The first was Lincoln Street Project, where they cleared underbrush around the Coos Bay North Bend Water Board's 1 million gallon water tank and the 2,200 block of Lincoln Street. The second was Pony Village Mall in the high school area. You may recall, we had a fire back there earlier this year. And so the fire chief really worked going to our partners, the local residences, the school district, and then also Pony Village Mall, which was collaborative on this effort. And so removed all the underbrush along what's called, I wonder why it's called this, Smoker's Trail. It has nothing to do with fire, which runs between the mall and the high school. Some of our bulldogs might know why, why it's called Smoker's Trail. Cleared the vegetation from the cinema's west door along Crow Lane, improving safety for the nearby residents and reducing fire hazards there. And then also the electric substation, working with Pacific Power, which was yet another partner, cleared all the underbrush surrounding an electric substation between Shoreline Church and Newmark Avenue. And the project contributes to protecting our power grid from wildfire risk. We have done so well on this project that the State Fire Marshal has awarded the city another $75,000 grant. And this one will be working with the OBAB and the watershed group in the airport.
Just watch that.
Yes. And so that's going to be very, very positive for, we're eliminating a lot of the French broom and Scotch broom and all these other brooms that come around Halloween. On the police department side, very proud to say that Sergeant Pat Kenny and Sergeant Jay Cole recently completed a week-long supervisor training program with the FBI, Law Enforcement Executive Development Association. And Sergeant Kenny has now received the Distinguished Trilogy Award for completing the full leadership series. And also want to point out that Sergeant Kenny has also been behind the scenes on grant writing and the department has been awarded another tranche of funds for traffic safety initiatives. And so we'll continue to educate the public as we work on those high intensity enforcement actions. With that said, I'll defer the floor back to you.
Okay, number 12, committee reports. I haven't heard of any, so I guess we have none. Counsel comments. We'll start with Counselor Nordoff.
It's been, it's been a real learning experience. I give credit to the staff for all their knowledge and their diligence and their dedication to the city. And I wish the council and the staff all the luck in the world because some of the decisions that are going to be coming down are difficult decisions. There are difficult situations, housing and other, other things that happen, they're just, they're difficult and there, sometimes there aren't easy answers. So the, the measure that just failed on the wastewater fee, I mean, that, that's, it's hard. It's hard and we're kind of dealing with decisions that were made a long time ago. So it just isn't an easy, it's not an easy fix. So I wish the council much luck going forward and lots of success.
Thank you. Counselor Schultz.
I, I wanted to bring that up as well. The idea that we did not pass the wastewater fee is something that we're going to have to think about. Not just us, but the community as well, about, again, thinking about how old our pipes are. I feel like I need to share that just as well, pipes. But it's not going to go away and the pipes aren't going to get better and the cost of materials is not going to go down and the manpower's not, the cost for manpower's not going to go down. And so the question becomes, where does it come from? And so again, I just worry about that. Suzanne, I'm going to miss you and I'm going to miss Pat my sandwich. So we'll, we'll see, we'll see what's next.
Counselor Jones.
Yeah, so I'm going to kind of double up on that, on that thought, that, to me, the real elephant in the room is that what we take in doesn't pay for our basic services in a real, in a way that's, that's only going to get larger. In the past, it hasn't been a priority, didn't need to be a priority perhaps, for us to lobby for our fair share of the pooled resources that we as workers put our money into if we're in the W2 system. And that time has passed for us. We will have to continue to get grant, to go for grants. And it's extremely competitive. You know, there's not municipality in the nation that doesn't have some form of this, this same process where we're just not bringing in enough to cover our basic services. And so we have to make really hard choices on any number of levels. I think we can work together so that we can bridge the concerns that our community comes with. You know, I, I think, I think that like the DEI statement is a very powerful and interesting discussion that we, that we can actually refine and drive down into something that, that really makes it so that we cover what we need to cover, we stay out of the investigation business, we stay out of court, and we also remain business friendly. We also remain able to have policy that is business friendly, that, that makes all of the things that we need to do possible. You know, we are in a free market. Nobody has to do business with the city if they don't want to, you know? And in, in some ways, we need the services more than, you know, there's, there's not a lot of providers. So this is a difficult crossroads to navigate, but we can, we can do that. We can do that as a collective, we can do that with the effort of staff, and we will. Thank you. But you're up.
Yeah, thank you for serving Suzanne. I had a big old speech wrote for Pat, but apparently he didn't want to stick around for it, but.
It was beautiful.
Oh, yeah. You know, I think back to when I, you know, started showing up every meeting after ever and watching Pat during those, you know, eight, nine o'clock meetings and he made the comment that one night about missing Perry Mason and it was funny because only the older people in the room got it. The young kids were like, what's Perry Mason? But I thought that was funny and Pat always, you know, as soon as I got on, he was happy because I was his partner crying wearing a hat. So hoping I can talk somebody else into it here in future. So, yeah, I want to say thank you and congratulations to the new candidates coming in and eager to work with, with everybody. To touch on Counselor Jones and Counselor Schultz, Schultz said, you know, yeah, and I think this group is, you know, working very well and creatively coming up with solutions to help these issues along with staff, obviously. I think we'll get there. We've done things already that I didn't know were possible, so it was pretty cool. I want to say too, congratulations to Macy on our certification.
Yes, yes.
So shinning, I can't wait to see where that's at. So carry on.
That it? I have nothing, but I've talked more tonight than I have for a long time, so.
I have something to.
I got something for you too.
14, 14B. 14.2.
14.2. 14.2. All right.
I'd like to give you this plaque. Presented to Counselor Suzanne Nordoff and the recognition in your service to the City of North Bend 2021 through 2024.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I have, I have an early Christmas present that I would like to present to the city and to the good people of North Bend.
Wait, can we open it?
This is sort of a hand me down. How do I, does anybody have a knife? I've got to think about it. I really didn't guess. That would come in handy.
Very good.
This was fun trying to wrap this with two kittens hobbing it while I was trying to get it wrapped. It was, it was trying. Okay. So the story on this is that I have a friend named Bill Lemoine, who is a retired forester, had worked for Bureau of Land Management, and then as I understand it, he got recruited to teach forestry at Swat. And he did his master's degree on black walnut trees in Minnesota. He's originally from Massachusetts. So I inherited this and, and one time I lead one out to cut a Christmas tree and I made the mistake of letting him drag my truck, the old county road, all the way back into town. And my truck was really, it was kind of, it was a pretty sporty ride and I could never roll the window all the way, the window, he almost wrecked the window. This is, I think, something that should maybe possibly be of use over a computer center. We have one there. Is it a different angle? Is, that's a much larger, or that's a lot closer? But I thought this might be of better benefit to the City of North Bend than it would be to me.
That's cool.
And I thought, I thought people might appreciate it.
That's cool.
Okay.
Thank you. It's nice. I like it. Check it out. Thank you. You're welcome. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad you like it. It's black.
You want to hold your plaque? You want to hold your plaque?
Oh, black, black. Oh, okay. Absolutely.
All right, ready? All right, here we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Suzanne.
All right.